Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the school committee, April 25th, 2019. If anyone is in the room is recording the meeting or videoing the meeting, please, you have to notify the chair. Also, Ms. Ruiz is recording the meeting as well as WCTV. If we just stand for the pledge now? Today, we have Samari can lead us off from the high school.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I like to start off meetings with a quote that may or may not have anything to do with tonight's meeting, it's just something to think about. This is from Marvin Phillips. "The difference between try and triumph is a little oomph." All right, and with that, is there anyone wishing to speak for public comment in the audience? No? Good news. I believe there's some athletes that would like to come down and speak for good news? You'll wait?
The coaches come down with one of their players. We've got a couple on our way, we moved from a track meet, but they'll be here pretty soon.
All right, we'll do it later, then.
I'm starting now.
Okay, good.
We have our cheerleading coach up first, Rochelle Pratt. Glad we came up at a time and moved here.
I was just gonna sit here. Hi, my name's Rochelle Pratt. This is my first year coaching for the high school. I had a really good group of kids, we had a good season. They learned a lot, they had a lot of challenges, but they did good. Want to say something? So, I guess that's it.
Anything else? Thank you, thank you very much.
Steve, was that football?
The cheerleaders, the cheerleaders that were just up, is that the basketball cheerleaders?
Yes.
Well, no, yeah.
Football is right, right?
Yeah, I did football too.
I just asked because for the report tonight, it's cheerleading basketball, but it's all of them. Okay, thank you. Very good GPA, by the way. Ninety-one point seven. Who do we have here?
I'm Steve Faniel, I'm the boys' basketball coach. This is Taylor Carlson, one of my senior captains, that's Samari Gust, another one of my senior captains, and Devin's on the way, he's doing track, but he's my other senior captain. So, I think, you know, these three guys, I've never had a group of better leaders, and I think it kind of shows, you know, on the court, we had some success over the last three years. These guys on the varsity have a master record of forty-five and fifteen. They've won two South Coast Conference championships, and they've really been leaders in the school on and off the court. So, I'm very proud of these guys, they've left a legacy that, you know, my underclassmen are gonna have to achieve. Individually, you know, Taylor this year was the unanimous MVP of the league, he scored a thousand points. Samari was one of the hardest working kids I've ever seen, and Devin was one of the best leaders that we've ever had. So, I'm very proud of these guys. Any success that we have in the future is because these guys, you know, paved that road for us, so that's about it.
Excellent. Anyone have anything for the basketball team?
I just want to congratulate you on your conference championship and on your thousand-point scoring, that's a pretty great accomplishment to have as senior.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nope, just to say thanks for coming and sharing.
Yeah, and so, how long have you been coaching?
This is my fourth year.
And in that fourth year, this is the...
This is the group that started it.
But this is the group that is the best?
Well, best leaders.
It starts leadership, yeah.
Yep, best leaders that we've had since I've been the coach. So, you know, these guys were the freshmen my first year, so this is really my first group that's gone all the way through, and they did an outstanding job.
Awesome. Great job, guys.
Thank you. Thanks.
Bear with me a little bit here, I've got little allergies going on, they're killing me. My name is Richard Belikovich, I'm the hockey coach at the high school. This is one of my captains, Brian Gallagher, in Q to Canto. Obviously, we had a great year, probably the best year we've had in about fifteen years. The kids really stepped up this year, I mean, we beat Boone for the first time in fifteen years, we beat Old Rochester for the first time in ten years. We got to the tournament and we ended up playing a D-two team, unfortunately, when we were in a D-three, they move us up because we're co-op, and I think everybody expected to blow us out of the water, and we actually hung in and had a great game against them, surprised them. So, overall, it's been a lot of fun. Again, this is my, will be my fifth year coming up as head coach, and we're, the program's starting to build. This past year, then, we had almost twenty-six, twenty-eight kids try out, it's probably the most we've had in years since, you know, I've been there, I mean, this, overall, will be my twelfth year, you know, four years as manager, three as an assistant, and now my fifth year coming up, so looking forward to another exciting year coming up this year, so a lot of fun.
You guys want to say anything? No? Does anyone have anything for the hockey team?
No, I just want to say thank you, thanks for coming and thanks for sharing.
Thank you for everybody's support, thank you.
How many seniors do you have on your team?
We just lost six, so coming up, I think we have five, I think.
Four or five.
Four or five, we're gonna be losing, yeah. So, and, you know, and that's, you know, my job is I keep going out and trying to, because obviously, we get a lot of eighth graders that come up and play at a varsity level, so a lot of the parents get very concerned, they're babies playing a man's sport, and I'll go out during the year and check on them, you know what I mean, while they're playing youth hockey, and see if they're capable of playing to that level. This year, we were able to have like maybe seven JV scrimmages, I call them, as practices, just to keep the younger kids involved, so they want to stay around and, you know, and stay here and play, because unfortunately, you know, we run into problems that they'll go somewhere else, so I want them to hang around, and I keep working with a lot of the young kids a lot, so it's a lot of fun.
It's definitely a great atmosphere, I've been to several games, as you know, and it's, it's the way that this hockey team, I believe, the last two years with the group of kids that you have has really brought, you know, you see a lot of community support coming out to these games, the stands are packed and warm, which is great to see.
Absolutely, I mean, we've done a few things this year with the cancer night we had there, raising money for that, a lot of people came for that, so we're doing, trying to do more community stuff at the rink to bring the fans in, but yeah, definitely this year, the fans are behind us a hundred and ten percent, it was a lot of fun to see, you know, and especially having a playoff game at home for the first time in fifteen years, so that helped, so that was a lot of fun.
Very exciting stuff.
Anyone, anyone else for the hockey team? So, so, it's interesting quote, "Baby's playing a man's sport, but you've got ladies on that team."
I absolutely do, yeah.
At playing goalie?
I just passed, yeah, I had three.
Playing goalie?
Two, yeah, one from Wareham, which obviously, she's supposed to play with the girls' team supposedly at that point, they didn't get the waiver this year, so I'm like, well, I said she'll really learn a lot playing with the men. I was nervous for us in our first week, so I'm like, well, they're only gonna suck it up now, and she was unbelievable, she got a great write-up in the paper, she really...
She's an eighth grade, right? Eighth grade, playing goalie, varsity hockey, I mean, that's something you tell your kids about, you know what I mean?
Yeah, the article was great, they actually, the paper stepped up and talked to me about it and to see if she would do it, and I said definitely, it was well deserved, you know, and then she didn't play a ton, but when she did get in there, she played, she made some great saves, got the crowd going, and so, yeah, it was, it was fun to see her go out there and play.
I have one more question, do you feel that having the Carver alliance between, you know, having the Wareham-Carver Vikings has been hugely beneficial since the two towns came together with numbers involved and interest in the sport and in, you know, how, the camaraderie, do you, you don't feel any like cliqueness between each separate town, or does everyone seem to really come together?
Not at all, not at all. I think the first year or so, when it started, I think everybody was on edge, but since then, it's really gelled together, and for the first few years, I think Carver, you know, was only maybe three or four, but last year, they created close to eighteen Wareham and ten Carver, so it's starting to slowly equal out, which has been great, but I think, yeah, it's, I think it's been great for both towns, absolutely.
Dr. Schwann?
I just wanted to say that the elegance and grace of our students on the teams is quite astounding overall, and it happens, it happens over and over again, and it's happened under some pretty difficult situations, and I'm wondering, are there certain things that you feel or the coaches feel that they do to promote that kind of response, those kind of behaviors when faced with challenges?
Well, absolutely, I mean, I think when I first come in right away during the season, the beginning of the season, I think a lot of my players know where I stand, you know, with respect and discipline, you know, overall, that's my biggest thing is, you know, being on time, doing what they're supposed to be doing, you know, and turning, you know, great kids out of them, you know, and moving on to school, and that's my goal too, is getting them into colleges and moving on from there, and I think that's big. I just had a kid, just a short story, there was a junior a year ago, barely could play hockey, you know, and he was gonna fail out of school, and I kept my thumb on him, and he graduated with honors, and his parents just sent me a picture of his report card in college, and he's got all A's, so for me, that's a win right there, and they said if it wasn't for myself, they don't know where he'd be, even though he didn't, you know, wasn't a good hockey player. So, I think that's, that's been huge for me, and just growing with them, I mean, like I tell these kids, they're my family, we're all family for, you know, no matter how many months we're together, but outside that, they know that I'm always there for them no matter what, so.
And so, you've been there twelve years?
Twelve years, like I said, four years I've been managing, and then I went three years as an assistant, so upcoming now will be five years.
You guys have come a real long way, I mean, and there was talk at one point of canceling the program, I mean, just because the per pupil costs, hockey's expensive, you know, and they don't have as many kids playing it, but you guys really sharpened your pencils and got those numbers down, and it's really paid off, it really has.
Appreciate it, excellent.
The uniforms, you had, you made special uniforms for that cancer night.
Blockout night ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It takes a lot of money for those.
And did that come out of the budget or is that out of your own pocket?
Something like fundraisers, the way we have done with the money back into the program.
And those, those uniforms were awesome, they were really good.
They gave us good luck one night, but I was sad, gotta put them aside after that, but now they did, everybody complimented on them, it was fun, and then, you know, we did stuff like that even during, like, the ugly sweater night, the coaches wore all ugly suits, and so we tried to get involved with that with the kids, and then when we made the tournament, everybody dyed their hair blond, and the coach had to dye his blond, so it's just starting to grow, I got to get rid of the greys, but it was a lot of fun with it, great bunch of kids.
You know, I have a question, it might be more appropriate for the athletic director, but I think, I didn't see any charges for buses, do you guys pay for buses?
No, Carver handles the buses.
That's why, that's why, all right.
Yeah, they handle that part of it, yeah, and the referees, so.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Dave Brugjali, the Wareham girls' basketball coach, and just here to talk about the team real quick, and this is my senior captain, Ryan McSherry, who's, who's great, I'm gonna talk about her in a second. We didn't have the greatest record this year, we were seven and thirteen, so we were a little disappointed, we didn't make the state tournament, but we will be next year. One of the big things that we got for the fifth consecutive year, we won the MIAA Educational Athletics Achievement Award for community service. These girls have raised over thirty thousand dollars the four previous years for members of the community, and this year, we decided, we didn't really have, find that particular family that was in great need, that people could rally behind, so we ended up taking on the homeless in the community, so we worked with the nights of hospitality, and we got a donation from the police department, the Wareham Police Department donated five hundred bucks, which was great, and then we also donated over eight hundred items to the nights of hospitality, which went to the local churches to help out the homeless in the community, so I thought it was really great. So, all said, these kids have raised over thirty thousand dollars, like I said, in the last five years, and done a great job with that stuff. Academically, it's the best group I've had, which says a lot, we've had some really good girls' teams as far as academics, but we had more than half of our varsity team, five of our players were on the National Honor Society, the team's GPA, which, which Mr. Rogics will talk about, is outstanding, and, you know, on top of the, top of the list here is Ryan McSherry, senior captain, she won the MIA Sportsmanship Award, she's the best captain I've had, she sets a great example for the younger kids, because I can, I'm pretty honest with Ryan, always have been. Ryan, when she came in, I would never, I used to argue with Coach Cashman when she was my assistant, that, give her a chance, I'm like, she'll never be a varsity basketball player, I used to always say it, she's not gonna be a varsity basketball player, she just doesn't have the talent. Her work ethic was unbelievable, and she had great speed, but her work ethic was amazing, and she played center for us this year, she was our leading rebounder, and she, she was, you know, arguably our top two players on the, on the court this year, and, but what a great job as a captain to teach to the younger kids that, you know, you work at it and you get better, and every year, and she picked up a ball in the offseason going into this year and really got herself better, made herself into a very good player, and she was honorable mention for the All-Star, for the league, she won the SCC Sportsmanship Award, as well as the State of Time Sportsmanship Award, and she won the NIAA award, which I think Mr. Rogics is gonna talk about as well, which only one kid, one kid in the state wins, and she won it for her outstanding and being outstanding in three, three sports, and as a captain in all three sports, and as a role model and a great student, so I cannot say enough good things about this girl, she is amazing.
Thank you.
It's your turn.
Oh, okay. Thank you for saying all those nice things about me.
Well, they're true.
Yeah, I was not good at basketball originally, I'm still not great, even though he says those things, I'm not that great. Yeah, but I was really excited to win the SA Award, because, I don't know, it kind of just like proved to me that all my hard work had paid off, and I think, I hope that it kind of proves to people that like, you can like succeed in Wareham, you know, in sports and academics, that like, it's a good community and a good town, yeah.
Good stuff.
Thank you.
Awesome. Anyone have any questions?
Congratulations on all your sportsman awards, it shows, you know, statewide, your character, you know, sportsmanship is, you know, something I feel like in a lot of youth sports, having witnessed, it's not always on the forefront, and I'm glad to see that it is in Wareham, so that, that's, that's really great, so congratulations.
Thank you.
You've had a busy day.
Yes, yes.
You went to...
Yeah, I went to the top-five luncheon in a sonnet for our class, so I'm ranked in the top five of our class, so everybody in the conference had all their top-five kids go to the lunch, and we got like these certificates and like medals, and then I had a track meet, and then, so I just came from the track meet here, so it's been busy, but...
Dr. Schwann?
I want to also mention that Ryan is a full IB student, one of the brave souls that started last year with an abysmal schedule, and is taking eight or nine AP and IB exams? Are you eight?
Yeah, so I'm taking seventeen total, just because some of the classes have two, so I'm taking seventeen tests in my last twenty days of high school, so that'll be fun.
Yeah, she's...
So, I have to say that it's pretty amazing to, to see and, you know, be a witness to it, we're looking at the lists, it's a kind of a...
And where are you going to school?
I'm going to Tulane University next year in New Orleans.
Nice.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And how many were you accepted to?
I applied, I applied to six, and I was accepted to four, waitlisted at one, and denied from one.
Oh, their loss.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I...
Tulane's gain.
Exactly, thank you.
What do you plan to study?
I plan to double-major in secondary education and psychology, to become a high school math teacher, and then possibly a school psychologist.
Wow, okay. Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you for coming tonight and sharing, and congratulations, Ryan, on such a prestigious award.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
There's one more, Coach Gardner's not here yet, he's dropped the kids off and waiting to come back, so one more, and then I'll just have them come up from the later on, if that's okay?
Sure.
Are we supposed to make, you know, probably still gonna come by even though you haven't been there? Now they haven't, it's on track.
Can I ask a question of all of the coaches that have spoken, how, do you have any idea of how many of your seniors are planning to continue their sports careers as they enter college?
Each coach could actually answer that better than I could, but I don't know.
I have two.
You have two?
Yes.
That's a majority, so that's, that's, that's great. I was just curious as to how many, you know, high school athletes would continue.
Not a lot of seniors this year.
Right, senior, she's, she's looking to play club soccer at Tulane.
Fantastic.
I have a couple, I saw Carver, I know that's definitely going to college, but...
Awesome.
Then I have to, probably a couple of these guys, they graduate next year, we'll go on.
Wonderful.
There's very few seniors on our teams this year, the majority of our teams are...
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, right, so, so, you should, you should come to the microphone, please, that's all.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I forget, I forget we're televised.
Thank you.
So, so, definitely Taylor, he hasn't decided what school yet, he has a lot of different options, a different, a lot of different levels, so he's looking at a prep school, he's looking at a junior college, and he's, can, has his pick of D-three colleges that he wants to go to, a lot of schools are recruiting him, so he hasn't made his, up his mind about Wichita Avenue he's gonna go yet, but we've been talking to his family, and where eventually really comes down to scholarship money and, you know, where the best fit is for him. And then Devin, who's here now. He got here from track meet, this was my other captain. Devin's gonna go to Curry, and he is looking to play basketball at Curry, so we're gonna do everything we can to make sure that he has that opportunity.
That's fantastic, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So, we're still on good news, does anyone on the committee have good news?
I do.
Ms. Backyaki?
I just want to say thank you to the voters at town meeting for approving the project to resurface the track, it's very exciting, and I just want to say thank you to Coach Gardner, I should wait for him to get here, and to the superintendent, there's a lot of hard work, and to the CPC for their willingness to meet with us and, and have a conversation and come to an agreement, you know, and I just want to say thank you, it's very exciting.
Anyone else? Report of the student representative.
Hi, so can we have Decca come up to discuss their upcoming auction? Is anyone there to represent that?
I think they're at Nashville.
All right. So, The Little Shop of Horrors is happening, it's a musical for the high school Vikings, theater company on Maiden Nine through Twelve, and also has a bun, a brunch, I think, on Sunday for Mother's Day, that goes along with it, so that's cool. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. All right. Next item is minutes of the meeting, April 11th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Passes five zero zero. Winter athletic report.
If you need me to push it off, I can, like, move it down.
As you can tell, the winter was, it was the best overall season since I've been here in six years, we had a winning record in the league and a winning record overall, which hasn't happened in a while. Very pleased with all the accomplishments, as you can see through all the coaches and players that were up here, we had an outstanding group of, of young people, and hopefully it's gonna continue in the spring, we're holding our own, and hopefully, this is a sign of things to come in the future, and I'm very happy with the coaches that we have and how things have come together, and hopefully, we'll continue to get better in, in all our sports. And as far as the, you have any questions on the budget and all that, that's fine, please ask me any questions you need, I have no problem.
Mrs. Backyaki?
So, first, I want to say, you know that I believe that a strong sports program is a big part of the culture at the high school, so the one that we have is, is great, and so, thank you. I do have a question, so last time you were here, I had a spreadsheet about boys versus girls, so I went ahead and I added to it, and I added this season, so there's still a pretty big difference between what we're spending per athlete on girls and boys.
You know, the only thing I can tell you is this, when I have, every year, every, every season, for an example, I am constantly talking every day with our coaches, whatever, like spring season right now, there's not a day that doesn't go by where I don't talk to every head coach about something, winter, the same thing, as we go. Every, every sport is different, depending on what is needed, for an example, what is basketball versus, say, cheerleaders, okay? Cheerleaders don't have officials, we have three teams in basketball, that's three coaches, they have three games at a time, that's two officials each game, we have an announcer, we have two cops, we have tickets, all that, we don't have any of that, so all those expenses are totally different, I mean, we need, you can't compare the two, and that's what happens with a lot. If you look at a boy's sport versus a girl's sport, in the same sport, it's probably similar. Now, in girls' basketball, it wouldn't be because they don't have a freshman team, so now the expenses go way up, that freshman team adds buses, coaches, officials, all that stuff.
We actually spend more per girls, for a girl basketball player than we do for a boy, and that has a lot to do with receipts.
Did, how did hockey, where did you put hockey, because it's co-ed, I'm just curious, where did that cost go, to the boys' side or the...
They went to the boys', yeah.
Yeah.
How many girls are on the team?
Three.
But there's also girls that can play for BMW, so that's gonna, hockey's always gonna skew the numbers, hockey and football.
But I'm not, you know that I'm a big supporter of the athletic programs, so I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're...
Ed has a schedule that he, that he follows, and I'm sure he'd be happy to share with you, where it's a, it's a, it's a rotation of uniforms, because uniforms is, is the big cost.
Big expense, right.
So, he rotates and he follows this to a T, just to make sure it's equitable, unless there's an unforeseen situation, this is the rotation, so it's fair, it's equitable, every team is on the rotation, gets a new uniform, and I don't, is it five years, Ed?
Roughly, yes, roughly, we try to do it, depending on the shape of, we try to do five years, and, and I, like I said, I constantly talking with coaches of the boys' teams, the girls', it doesn't matter which team, and I'm constantly asking, when the season's over, what are your needs, what do we do, da-da-da-da-da, and, you know, I don't...
Can I ask, Joyce, also...
Depends on whether it's for me, if it's boys or girls, honestly, I'm just trying to do the right thing for each team.
Is it, is it, I have never, I have, not in many years have I calculated the number of participants, males versus females, is that factored in at all, because that, that's a driver as well?
Well, yeah, because to get to the cost per athlete, I take the total cost divided by the number of athletes.
Okay, I can give you some other examples, too, when I first got here, cheerleaders had never gotten, ever, ever received uniforms, we were the first ones to buy them uniforms. Field hockey team didn't have away uniforms, I was like in shock when I got here. Boys' basketball and girls' basketball basically fundraised for their uniforms, and those, we don't do that anymore.
Right.
That special hockey thing, that was a special type of uniform that they did on their own, but this year, they're up for uniforms, and they will get uniforms from the school, per se, I don't have any team buy their own uniforms, you know, that's one thing I, Mr. Paladino and I both talked about.
We ran into a few problems about fifteen years ago with that, so we took that away quickly.
Yeah, we just, we, we buy the uniforms, and like I said, I, I think I have a really good relationship with our coaches, and if any coaches, they have needs, they ask me, if I can accommodate them, believe me, I will go out of my way to accommodate them, you know, and it's, I don't, I don't see that, I think maybe it looks that way, but it's not, I think each team and each sport is, is just different.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure we're giving everyone the same opportunities, that's all.
I get it.
So, so, looking at this, it, you know, it's great that it's the, that you guys break it down by how many of the underclassmen are able to participate of your total number, and on our, like, for hockey and wrestling that you have, how many from, from Carver? On the wrestling, there were twelve participants, eleven from Carver, I'm just curious, cost incurred on that, we had one student from Wareham that was on the wrestling team, is that the average, has it been more flipped like that, or is that...
Hasn't, hasn't been great lately, so... Hasn't been great lately, so, I'm not, maybe about three or four.
You can always count them on one hand.
Yeah, and it's like, you know, we, they're the whole school, they're accommodating us, so we send them the athletes. They absorb the greater of the costs.
Okay, that's, that was my, my question.
Yeah, they absorb the cost for that.
Team to absorb the hockey.
Well, hockey's different. See, hockey is so expensive that they have to absorb some of the cost, so what happens, they'll take care of the officials.
I meant more in like the home rink type of, you know, having it be in Bourne, like closer to our.
Well, there aren't many rinks to go to. That's like the home rink for many, many schools. And what happens with hockey is, if we didn't split the cost, when I don't split it, we still pay the majority of it. If I didn't get any of these expenses from Carver, forget it. Carver pays for the officials, the buses, and they also give me a four thousand dollars. I'll be receiving a check any day from them that helps us for the season, because ice time alone is just insane, so they help us quite a bit, and that's how we do it. Now, wrestling is a totally different animal. We don't, they don't need all that stuff, so, you know, we, we, we don't have to pay the expenses like that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you?
Nope.
Alright. I just had a question. So, so, okay, you're on the schedule to do uniforms and stuff like that, so I guess the, this was the boys' basketball year.
Yes, and actually, part of the girls' basketball, too, because we wanted to get them, there was enough so that I could get them enough uniforms now, so that their Javies and Votsy all have one set.
Okay.
It's almost unheard of. Now, we couldn't do that in boys' basketball, it'd be too, it was, it's too expensive.
Alright, so, the line says uniforms and equipment, so for the boys' basketball, it's about forty-three hundred dollars, is that, what is that? Just like, you know, shorts and t-shirts, or what is that?
You have, no, no, no. First of all, basketball uniform, top and bottom, two sets.
Yeah.
It's probably about thirty-five hundred dollars. And then the equipment, basketballs, we get them six balls, that's maybe fifty to sixty dollars a ball, you know, plus scorebooks, plus, what else did I get them this year? I'd have to think about it. But more or less, whatever the girls' basketball team gets, the boys get. It's almost the exact same thing, except for uniforms, and try to do it fifty-fifty as best we can.
Ms. Rossi?
I actually do have one more question, I'm sorry. I know on the front page of this, you have each of the fundraising.
Yeah.
That the teams did during the different.
Yeah.
Seasons. Do you have the monies earned their totals, and where, how were those applied? Were they put back into a general fund for the team, or, I'm just curious.
They go into a booster club fund. We have a Wareham booster club, so they, what they have to do is a, there's one of our big boosters right here, so they have to get the money, and then we give it to, usually Janine Alexander, for an example, and then she puts it in their account. Ten percent goes to the booster club, the rest goes to the team, and then if the team needs, say, whatever, sweatshirts as an example. So, they go buy the sweatshirts, and then this is what it costs, and then we either reimburse, or, or they show them what it's gonna cost, they give them the money out of the account to pay for the sweatshirts.
Is it listed where, how much was raised from each fundraiser somewhere?
No, yeah, well, yeah.
Just to see which one is the most profitable, or which one might be worth looking into? I know in other organizations.
Yeah, I don't put that on this report, but I mean, that's not hard to find if we really needed to do that.
No, but each team coordinates their own fundraiser.
Yeah.
So, they choose their own, okay.
Yes.
And, and the, the idea of the fundraising is it provides the extras that are not a necessity to participate. The school provides all the equipment supplies that are necessary to participate. Ed gave a great example, you know, the kids want a sweatshirt, if that's something that we don't need to provide to participate, that's a little extra, that's where the fundraising comes in.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, and so, I was on the Budget Advisory Committee with Dr. Shaverhood and Ms. Bakayaki this year, and I didn't know this. I didn't, I didn't know that the athletic director was a half-time position.
It's part-time position.
He works full-time, though. That's what I mean, that's, so, so.
You know, I was supposed to put in twenty, I've never put in twenty.
No, I know, and I know, obviously, and I was like. I remind him it's part-time, Mike, he just doesn't listen to me.
You know what, I'm, I'm retired, and I enjoy it. Honestly, what would I do? Go home and hang around, so I have no problem doing this. I like it. The people here, Mr. Paladino's been great. People that I've worked with at Wareham High School have been great, and so I enjoy it, and I don't mind putting in hours, as long as I enjoy it, and I enjoy what I'm getting, and I'm getting it, I'm getting good feedback back from.
I mean, it made total sense to make it full-time, and we went back and forth, and ultimately it stayed part-time, but it was like, yeah, we're getting our money's worth there, thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you, appreciate it.
No, I, we, I appreciate it.
I have a question. So, when you look at your equipment and uniforms for all your teams, is there anything, not just with winter, but when you look at spring, fall, winters, that you would say we should provide for our athletes that we haven't?
Well, there's a lot of things. I think I, I would look more towards the facilities type things, if we could upgrade those in certain areas.
Bleachers, backboards.
Those are, you know.
Falling apart.
Like the gym, for an example, it needs new bleachers. Those, you know, those have been there with the original school, so it's, what happens is they break down because they're so old, so what happens is I have to have somebody come in. Just to have them come in, you're talking a couple of thousand dollars. Whereas, you know, it's gonna, they're gonna come three or four times a year now, because what happens, it's, it's a domino effect. This breaks down, we fix this. Well, now this one's gonna go, now this one's gonna go. So, I'm always holding my breath to make sure bleachers coming out alright for the game tonight, we're all set, you know, we have to get this quality, it's been good with us, this guy from Quality Gym's been fantastic. And, you know, I've talked to him about what's the possible, what would it cost for a brand-new bleachers, and it's a lot of money. So, it's like, you know, it's.
And we've got a few other fish to fry before we get to that point.
So, it's just, yeah, there's, I think facilities, I think we've done a great job with the softball. Our new softball coach has been fantastic, and we've worked together, and softball has really been built up, really nice things like that, and, and, you know, we were happy. Like, some of our coaches do their own things. Steve's got a shooting machine that he bought, that's like five thousand dollars for that, you know? That's something that we'd love to do, but I can't afford to do that, so teams fundraise for things of that nature and stuff. There, there are a lot of things that we could do, but, but honestly, our facilities in general, it's okay. I mean, baseball's really beautiful, obviously, but there are things that we need that coming to be, I could write a list up, that's, it would be more than, you know, stuff for the kids, as far as, I think their uniforms are pretty good, and normal, and normal stuff that they need, balls and all, that's not a problem, it's just, if the facilities could be a little bit better, what we need.
And so, Dr. Shaverhood, I appreciate that question, and I'll just say this to you, or any Wareham public school staff, person who's listening, don't be afraid to ask, because the last time, the, the one thing I learned through this whole, you know, school, minute school building process, is that the public is really upset about us not maintaining what we've got, and it's, it's sometimes like we're afraid to ask, you know, just like this, and.
Okay, I'll put it out there.
No, no, I mean, if we need bleachers, if bleachers are gonna, you know, bust and not open and shut, we need to replace them. If backboards are ready to fall apart, we need, so, so we gotta do it. So, don't be afraid. I mean, worst gonna say is no, and at least the public, it'll be the public saying no, because we'll be going to town meeting, and if they say no, it's like, listen, we tried, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
No, I've been, we got some money to upgrade the softball field this year, which was great. We got money from, from, from Dr. Shaverhood for the, the pits, the high jump pits, which was a lot of money and stuff like that. Now, she's been very favorable to whatever we need, and I try to come up with some things. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say too much, like you said, but maybe I'll start doing that.
We're, we're in a much better place today than we were five years ago. Yeah, we've got a roof. Thank God. I'm just, yes, the roof, yes, definitely, but, but, you know, from a facility standpoint for athletics, we're really, we're getting there, and, and, you know, I can guarantee you that, you know, the bleachers and those things are on our list, they will be addressed. It's just prioritizing what needs to be done. Well, it's just, I mean, this, it's the first time hearing of it, and when we have those, like, you know, all-day budget meetings, like, that, bring it up then, what do you need, you know? Yes. And so, and so this question is probably more so to you, Scott, the, the arrangement with the Gaitman and Decker and the concession stand, is that still going on? So, we unfortunately received notice that it's not going on the way it has in the past. It's gonna be a little bit different, which is disappointing. Oh, no. Right. Something to discuss later, maybe? I'm hoping the door's still ajar. I've sent emails out, haven't received a response recently, so I'm hoping. Alright. That there'll be some more communication on that. Alright, wow, I'll talk to you later about it then. Definitely. Alright, thanks. Thank you. Anything else? Chris is here.
Coach Gardner, come on up. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Who's here?
I'm Christopher Gardner, the boys' and girls' track coach. With me, Jillian Rodding, one of the senior, one of the captains of the team, and Isaac Salim, another captain of the team. One of our other captains from the winters at a DECA competition in Florida, so she can come here today.
So, what's going on?
You tell me.
Everyone was filling us in on, on how you're, you feel, you felt the winter season went, and any accolades that you have for any of your athletes during that time.
I think it went well. We had an increase in participation from both sides, from both boys and girls. Yeah, we had a lot of younger kids on the team, eighth graders and freshmen, sophomores, a lot more than we've had in the past couple of years, trying to get back up to the forty that we had a couple of years ago. We had a pretty good season individually. Isaac ran really well. He placed, I think, fifteenth in Division Four in the six hundred, Division Five, thank you, Division Four outdoor, Division Five indoor season. Jillian placed sixth at the Division Five meet, and her jump qualified her to the All-State meet, where she placed sixteenth, yeah. She broke her, yeah, sixteenth in the whole state in the long jump, and broke her own school record during that, yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, it was a, it was a good season, yeah.
Any questions?
I posed the same question, sorry, oh, I'm so sorry, Joyce, hold on.
No, it's okay. I was just gonna say, thank you for coming, congratulations. I noticed that your numbers were up, so that's great.
Yeah, no.
And earlier, I tried, you weren't here yet, so I want to thank you for your hard work on the track project, and it's very exciting that it was approved this week, so thank you for your hard work.
Back out again for the fall, for some more stuff.
Ms. Rossi?
So, my, my question that I'd asked the previous coaches, as well, is if any of your seniors had planned on participating in track, in, if they have, you know, aspirations to continue as they enter college, to continue with their track.
We didn't have any senior boys on our indoor team, and Jillian was our only senior girl, and she is, I'm pretty sure she's planning on working on that.
Yeah, I just recently committed to Emmanuel College in Boston.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I think I'm gonna try to do jumping in college. I think I have a pretty good shot there, Division Three, so I'd be right up to where those girls are jumping now, or even better.
Good for you, thank you.
Anyone else? Over there? No? I'm just gonna say, wow, I think out of every winter sport, the girls' track had the highest GPA, right? Ninety-two point four, that's, that's outstanding. I was surprised, total of five games or meets, that's how many times you, you guys do this?
Yeah, it's, well, yes and no. I mean, the, those are the meets we have against individual schools in our conference, and then there's extra things that we go up to, go to, like, bigger invitationals that we go to. But, yeah, we definitely have the smallest amount of times of, that we compete. It's just lack of facilities to do that, because our only place where we compete is at Volk, and they kind of, they, they, they govern when we can use it at New Bedford Volk Tech, so. It is, stinks, because some of the invitationals you have to qualify for, so like, whereas, say, the basketball, basketball, either boys or girls, they have like fourteen to eighteen to twenty games, and we only get five, so, that stinks. But we try to, we get to Boston, we go to Rhode Island twice, we go wherever we can to compete, so it can get the kids as many times the competition to, to, so they have the opportunity to perform.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Hello.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah.
I should have mentioned it when I was up here before, but I want Ryan to come back up. This, this award that she got, so what happens is there was sixty students from around the state that went for this award, and she won it out of the sixty people. And now, there's regional competition right now. She's up against the New England States, New Jersey, and New York, and they're gonna pick a winner from that, and then they'll pick, then they'll go, there's like, I think there's six regions like that around the country, and then those six will go for the final award. The representative from Massachusetts last year won the overall award, was a kid from Middleborough, so it'd be nice if she can get that. They, they're gonna have me a nice, they have a plaque and all that coming, but they haven't sent it to me yet, and I'll present it there at the Senior Awards banquet, but I just want to know, the competition was, you know, there's sixty other students from around the state, you know, to be picked out of that was, was, that's quite an accomplishment, so.
Outstanding.
Yeah, it is, and so now, hopefully, I haven't heard on this regional thing that's coming out now, and then we'll see from here. I just wanted you to know the whole situation, so.
Thank you.
And that is quite a thing.
Dr. Schwann?
This was an essay, yes?
Yes.
And what was it about? So, it was like two separate questions. The larger of the questions was how high school athletics has impacted, like, my high school career, and the second one was just about like how a sport had like somehow changed, like, myself as a person. And so, for the first one, I just talked about how high school athletics was really like the highlight of my high school career, because it kind of taught me teamwork, and like, showed me that I like should be proud of my community, and it also like showed me that, like, I could really do things that I didn't know that I was capable of beforehand. And so, in the second one, I talked about basketball and about how I was really bad, and then I got to like be like not so bad through like working hard, and so it kind of showed that like, if I like work hard, then it'll pay off eventually, which, yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Thanks to Ryan's family, who's in the audience, too.
So, up next, we, we're all done with that, the win, yeah, alright. Up next is the mid-year attendance report?
Alright, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you have two papers for the attendance report. For the schools through, from August twenty-ninth through February twenty-eighth. And what you have is, you have it broken down by school, and it shows the attendance rate, the percentage, and if you go down, it looks at the tardies, absence, average daily attendance, and the percentage of attendance. On the, another page, you have comparing apples to apples, and so if you look at the page where it says decas, and there are three lines. The first one is current, the middle one is if it was, if nine, eighteen was the same as nineteen, you can, and then you have two thousand eighteen, and so you can compare what it would be with, with the different grade configuration. And so you have that throughout. I think one of the interesting pieces that we saw out of this is when you look at the middle school this year, if you pulled eighth grade back in, but then you look at the high school with eighth grade in, and you can see that really is the bubble that's raised some tardies and also some attendance pieces. And so it seems like our eighth grade, we need to pay some attention to with their, their attendance. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Alright, so I appreciate you breaking that out, because as I was reading this, I saw the high school, you know, two thousand eighteen for absences, it was like four seventy-seven, then it jumped to six oh four, and yet the percentage was about the same.
Right.
So, so that, that was why, I mean, the whole, you got a whole grade, you know, which, which, you know, but other than eighth grade, I mean, it's relatively static, right?
It really is, although I would, I'd point out the middle school with their tardies and really even their attendance, number of students absent. They've certainly have reduced the number of students being tardy this year. That was one of their goals that they've, they're working on. They're at one sixty-three. Even if they brought eighth grade back, they'd be at two seventeen, and when you looked, or two seventy-one, and when you looked at last year at the same time, it was four hundred and eighty-two. So, they've made it really a conscious effort and have, have made some pretty. So they've made it really a conscious effort and have made some pretty amazing strides. Same thing with attendance. When you look at the attendance, students' absence, you have three sixty-two. This year with grades five through seven. When you look at last year, it was seven nineteen. But if you pull the eighth grade back, it's still at five fifty-nine. So that is really, you can see some effort being made, and our students are attending more.
So from a state, I don't wanna say MCAS, but are we penalized if we go below a certain percentage on attendance?
We are.
What is that number?
Ninety.
It's not, they're doing it differently now. So they're calling it chronic attendant, chronic absences. And they're taking a cohort group of at-risk students. They're quantifying that number, and then they're asking you to go lower, get your target, they set a target for each of the subsequent groups, and that you, they want you to reach the target. So, and the target obviously is a lower number, right, because they want less students absent. And then they'll take that number and they'll quantify that in their system and give us a grade based on that figure.
And what they did, they sent out a list of our chronic students that we need to watch.
And target.
And target earlier in the year, so the principals and their, you know, the administration at the various schools have been focusing on working with those students and improving.
Ms. Rossi?
Are these, the total number of absences for any reason, including like, you know, like the DECA kids, the school trips? Are these unexcused absences?
Total.
Okay, and do we have a, is there a different listing that shows the difference between excused and unexcused? Or does that not make a difference?
Doesn't matter as far as the state is concerned.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
The state doesn't care if it's an excused absence?
No.
Wow.
And it's, to be honest, it doesn't make sense to put that on schools, because it's not under our, completely under our control.
Right.
It is what it is, and I've definitely made my sentiments known at the state level, but the, it's an interesting dynamic, right?
Yeah, you would think that the whole purpose of excused means that it wouldn't count against.
Counts. Everything counts.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
So my question is, have we also looked at, have we dug deeper in looking at repeated, you know, offenders? Ones that are bringing these numbers up?
Yeah.
Well, that would be on your list of chronic.
Right, yes. There's been much more focus on students and why they've been absent. Certainly with the additional support we have in the buildings, there's been conversations, there's been follow-ups. And we're working very hard to get their attendance changed.
Ms. Rossi?
So hypothetically, if a student has a chronic illness that is, we would constitute as a excused absence because they were out for medical reasons, the state looks at that as a chronic absence?
Correct.
That doesn't seem right to me.
It's not logical.
No. And is that something legislatively that would need to be addressed in order for that to change, or?
Well, I'm writing letters.
I'm just curious, like to what level that that comes down, because, I mean, a child with a chronic illness doesn't choose to have a chronic illness.
Right, but there's more things that go into the low target. So we would look at the grades, we'd look at their testing scores, that that's how they would get into that.
Into the chronic. So if they were absent due to their illness, but they're, made up their work, they were able to take part in their testing, they'd still be, they wouldn't be classified as chronic?
They choose, they choose it sort of, they quantify it in a system, so what they'll do is they'll choose a number of different students in a cohort group, and then they quantify that number, and you have to meet that target. So they don't necessarily look at all of the details in that, then they, and they break it up by need. So if it's a high-need student, a special ed student, an African-American or black student, Hispanic student, they have them all in different categories. In each category, you have to meet that certain target, and that's been quantified with a group that they've created through their data system. So it's a little, it's not, it's not cut and dry necessarily. Like, we'll work with all of our students, because that's our job, right? We wanna make sure kids are here and that they're learning. But the state is just taking the bigger picture of that group, and they're making another group. That's how they target with achievement as well. They take groups that they think meet certain criteria in the system.
Okay, so on a state level, they'll accept absences for a special needs student as different criteria as like a student with a chronic illness?
It's not different criteria, but they, they take that whole group, and then they'll choose the ones that are the most chronic within that group, and then they create a number. And then that, you, they'll look at what you've done, where each of those kids fell in absenteeism. Then they'll create, they'll do an average of that number, right? Then you get either points for making that number go lower, or no points for having the number get higher. See what I'm, so they, they break it into segments. It's pretty complicated, and I think it's complicated on purpose.
So just to add to the confusion, so do you count the children that are being home tutored as being absent? Are they?
Home schooled or home tutored?
Home tutored.
Getting tutored at home.
Or in the hospital, if they're hospitalized and they're being tutored.
Yes, home and hospital, no.
Right, that's what I thought.
Home for a specific period of time, yes.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Interesting.
So like a suspension would be considered an absence?
That's, yeah, that's an absence.
All right, so, and I wanted it broken out for apples and apples, because I was really curious. Now, how many, how many, how many less, how many students, how many less students are we busing now compared to last year?
Oh, probably a couple hundred, I would say.
A couple hundred, you know, because now we're doing, you know, we cut back, it's, you know, within the two miles or outside the two miles. And every time we had discussions on reducing busing, it was always, there was always this big worry that, you know, it would really, you know, plummet our attendance numbers, but it seems pretty much unaffected by busing, anyway. So that's good news. Anyone else on the attendance?
I guess my only question is about the eighth grade. So yes, I agree, the middle school has definitely, attendance has improved there with or without the eighth grade. But it does seem to be having an effect on the high schools, so has that been addressed in any way? Scott?
Yeah, sure.
So we, we meet weekly on not just attendance, but on grades. And we have at least one representative in court every Wednesday filing CRAs for students that have habitual attendance issues. It's frustrating with the eighth graders, and I'm sure, you know, that's not unique, as you mentioned. You know, their attendance is, eighth and ninth grade is very tough for attendance. It's interesting, as they hit the threshold of tenth grade, the attendance issues are much smaller, and every year they get smaller. But we're spending a lot of time working with the eighth graders. Again, the hope was, when we moved the eighth graders to the high school, was we could work through these problems before that GPA ticker starts, if you will. So, yes, it's concerning, but it's also, we're trying to get them to learn a behavior of, you know, the, we need you there every single day. You need to be on time, you need to be on the job, do the job. So while certainly the numbers are startling, I think we're starting to, that plan is in effect, and we're hoping that when they come in as freshmen now, they kind of understand the routine, the expectations. But we're also getting, and needier and needier kids, many of them that are hospitalized, many of them that move into town, enroll, and because of medical conditions, never show up. So, you know, when a class, you have a class of a hundred students, one kid is one percent every day they're out. So that's, there's not a lot of offset like there once was. But yes, we are investigating it, we're spending a lot of time. You know, you mentioned the kid on the list, and we'd be able to tell you the situation.
What's a CRA?
It's, it was formerly a CHNS, it's kind of a Child in Need of Services, so if they are.
What does it stand for?
So. Thank you.
Child what?
Receiving assistance.
Okay.
So basically, if they miss more than eight classes in a term, we can file the CRA, and the court will get involved, DCF may get involved, juvenile probation will probably get involved. And so, and they may provide resources for the parents if they're having trouble getting the students to school. The biggest issue is that once they hit age sixteen, the courts don't wanna see us, as you know, Mary. And, you know, so it's tough, and when it gets to the end of the year, the courts really don't wanna see us. So the good news is with the eighth graders, you know, obviously, they all fit that category of under the age of sixteen. Most ninth graders do, but as you get into sophomore, junior, fortunately, the numbers are less, but that's a, it's a tool that we use. But sometimes, you know, when they hit eight, it's like, that's late in the game.
Ms. Rossi?
Can I ask why at sixteen, if they're still under eighteen, why there's that?
It's a state law.
Change?
State law.
Well, and they're allowed to drop out, right, at that point?
At sixteen, they can drop out.
The parent can sign them out at sixteen, they can't drop out. But the parent, though, can file a CRA up to the age of eighteen. So, you know, where we may not have that authorization, we can encourage the parent to do it, and that does happen. Not as often as we would like, but it does happen. But, you know, it's, it's a, the problem, the tough part is, and I don't want people to think, oh my god, all these kids are in court. It carries through, like, so you go one day, and then it goes on for another meeting, and then, so it's only, you know, a couple, you know, it's like seven kids that we're trying to work with, their families, to get them into school on a daily basis. And all the other schools in the area there as well, by the way. I spent three years every Wednesday in court, so I'm well-versed when I was vice principal. But, you know, we are working on it, and I think we'll see next year, the ninth graders, I really do believe, you know, keep this, because I wanna compare it to next year with the ninth graders, I think we'll see some improvement.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on, January one, school attending report.
Yes, so you have what we submitted to DESI. It gives you the breakdown, it gives you charter school, out-of-school district, out-of-district school, homeschool, private and parochial, and out-of-state parochial. So on the next pages, you have it broken down by the various schools, and totals. You follow through the handout. You then will see, we start breaking it by grade level for you to see where we're at. And then finally, it gives you historical data. So if you have any questions?
The first sheet is, looks like it's straight from DESI, like, could anyone just generate this report?
Yeah.
You can go right on.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought we generated it, but you just.
Well, we have to send it in.
You sent it in, but like right now, anyone go to the DESI website and generate the same exact report? That's interesting, okay. And it gets a little confusing, because it's the same data multiple different ways. And I'm like, oh, it's the same stuff, you know, but, but yeah. Any questions?
So the.
All right, Ms. Rossi?
I'm sorry, so the total number of kids, no matter what the out-of-school placement, whether it's vocational, charter, private, is the twenty-seven sixty-six? So twenty-seven hundred and sixty-six students from Wareham are in enrollment? And I'm just trying to understand how this is calculated, because this says grade level kindergarten through twelve, and it has the totals at the end of whether it says, oh, because that includes the local public, okay. I apologize, because I looked at that number, and I was like, that seems staggering to me, so.
So what I would also tell you is that when we send in information to DESI, they do not want us to list preschool, choice students, state wards, homeless students, and and so it includes out-of-district and students that are only receiving services. So you'll see a total of two oh five six that we, when you take all those pieces out.
Our, sorry, our vocational, the vocational school, is that considered out-of-district? So if we were talking, I mean, because we're, Upper Cape is part of.
Upper Cape, and then you.
So if I was looking, so if you go through it, and you like look at the numbers, talking about out-of-district students. So like grade seven, if you, it looks like twenty-eight percent of kids in grade seven are not in Wareham schools. That's including collaborative, collaborative, charter, out-of-district, so on and so on. So when I get to the higher grades, so when I'm going to grade nine, would I include that sixty-four in, like, not counted towards Wareham? Does that make sense?
Yes.
So would I count them, or would I?
They do not, they're Wareham students that they do not attend with.
Okay.
When you say state wards, are those foster kids? And how many do we have?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Forty homeless right now. Fifty-two fost, foster?
That changes literally.
That changes every minute.
Like every day.
So let's say forty-ish or something, right, like, yeah.
Forty, in the whole district?
Yeah, we just got two new ones today. So every day.
Okay. And, and that's here, that they're here in Wareham, and I just, I just remember this from like one of the policy review meetings. Those, it's, it's illegal for us to require them to have immunizations, right? Like, don't they, aren't they separate? Yeah, Dr. Shaver is nodding her head in agreement. And I just think with the recent, you know, news about measles and stuff, that's scary.
Yes, so what happens would be, if we would have an outbreak of measles or, you know, some disease that you could have a vaccine for, what we would have to do is we would exclude the student from school for eleven days. If another outbreak happens within that time period, the clock starts again. So if we would have, theoretically, if we would have something hit day one, the students are excluded. We would have another outbreak on day five, that clock starts again. And so it just keeps rolling until we have an eleven-day period that would be free of anyone outbreaking.
So they realistically could be out for a significant amount of time.
Yeah, but the whole point of the vaccination is to prevent the outbreak, you know, that's, but we have no control over that, and that's, and I know, I know no one here can answer that question, I mean, but why, like, why can't, why are these students, they don't have to be vaccinated? I know it's the law, and separately, separately, I'm going to the Day on the Hill with four AP students, AP government students, May first, you know, Mr. Sweat used to do this all the time. Oh, and April, yeah, April signed up as well. And, and so, right now, I've developed like three or four questions for them, you know, this being one of them, like, how do we? This, I mean, I'm sure, frankly, it probably comes down to political correctness or something, I don't know. But we need to protect the kids, all of them.
I'm sure they're not the only non-vaccinated children. There's other.
Religious reasons you can have.
There's other reasons.
Foster kids?
Not foster, it's homeless.
I'm just talking about foster kids.
Can we clarify, though, I believe it's only homeless, not foster. Is that correct?
So how many homeless kids do we have?
Thirty.
Thirty, well, let's count.
Let's count.
It was thirty. And it doesn't mean that they don't have to be vaccinated. It means that they don't have to have documentation, so, right.
So they may or may not be vaccinated, and we don't know.
Right.
And we just kinda have to wait, we have to wait for the documentation to follow up.
Just breaks my heart that there are that many homeless students in our district, to be honest. I mean, vaccinations or not, is there, is there like, do we have stuff in place to help them? Do we put them in touch with services? Do they just show up and say, I live in a tent, here's my kid, come to school? I'm just curious how it works and how we, how we get to that point. So I'm just, like I said, I'm curious, I don't know the protocol on that, like, we just, obviously, it's a sensitive subject, and sadly, it's, I mean, I think thirty students in a small town like this is way, I mean, I think one student, a homeless student is one too many. But what is the, do we have a record of that changing of those people becoming, you know, housed in the community somehow, or?
So every, every.
Sorry.
Mary.
My sigh. So every, so they, people don't have to disclose if they're homeless, so we can't ask, people have to give us that information. Um, so every, so they, people don't have to disclose if they're homeless, so we, we can't ask, people have to give us that information. Um, when we do get that information, then we put them in touch with resources, but homeless can mean a variety of different things, it can mean that you might lose your housing and, and are staying with a family member, so it might just mean that I lose my housing, and I move in with my mother in town, and that would classify me as being homeless. So it doesn't always mean that you're living on the street, or that you, you know, living in a tent. It can mean that you just don't have a house, that you have a lease, or that you own, and that you have to maybe stay with, with friends or family, and that might mean that you're in another town. So that's when the homeless legislation kicks in, and just allows, um, the children to become stable, and tries to keep them stable in a school system. So if the family had to leave Wareham to secure housing, we try to keep them in the community, and the agencies get together to meet to see what the best interest of that child is, i- is it to move to the community where they're staying, or is it to stay in Wareham? And then we work that out, we have a meeting between all the different agencies, and we make that decision, and then we set up transportation, or whatever we need to do for, for the best interest of the child.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Mary, did you have something?
She basically said it all, but it's a very interesting and complex, um, topic, I guess, because, for instance, a person could be evicted from their housing, um, and this is actually an example that, um, is true. They're evicted from their housing, and they go to live with their daughter, and they decide they're going to stay with their daughter, but they're considered homeless until they find their own residence, so.
And that's not saying that we don't have people that are living in hotels and campgrounds, we do.
True, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and when you talk about other resources, you know, we, that's why we work really hard with our, uh, programs, the Stage Backpack Program, so we can make sure our students have food, um, the free lunch, the free breakfast, if you're here around dinnertime, we'll feed you. So, we understand that we have a number of students that have some needs. We also have closets in a couple of the buildings where we have clothes, that if students need some clothing, we're able to provide that.
Okay, not related to this, but back to the, to the report for the schools. I'm looking at, I'm just looking for clarification on what the TECCA Virtual Academy and the Mass Virtual Greenfield are exactly, and if that's, um, how that factors into out-of-district, like, what, is that, is that homeschooling, or is that something completely separate?
So, it's online, online schooling, so if I decided that I wanted my child to stay home, I did not want to be the homeschool agent, I could enroll them in a virtual school, and that's what the Greenfield School is.
They're homes, they're homeschool help, basically.
So, so it is, it's basically the same thing as homeschool, but it's not the parent being the teacher?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any more que- oh, Joyce.
I, well, it's, it's not really a question, but I did pull up the school attending report from last year, um, and just compared it to this year. So there has been a little bit of a, a jump, um, in the, especially like, in the middle school years. So I'm just hoping, I know that there's been a lot of, um, a lot of initiatives at the middle school, a lot of great things happening there, and I'm just hoping that next year, we'll see a change in that.
So, Dr. Shaverhood and I have been working on, um, putting together a focus group of people who have school choice to figure out, as of right now, I do have about eight participants, um, just interested from posting for them today, I'm hoping to get a larger, um, number, so that we can start setting some dates and times. So if anyone is interested, um, you know, in, or knows someone who's school choice, that might be interested in participating, they can email me directly, um, and um, we'll work out some dates and times, once we have, um, a fair sampling of people who have gone for different reasons. Um, so I've had several people reach out, um, offering to, to join, to kind of see what we can do to help us as a district to fix those numbers, hopefully, going forward.
Okay. Well, like I said, I know that especially at those grades, there are already things happening, you know, things different than last year, and so, so I'm very encouraged that that will change.
Anything further? Uh, mo- mo- oh, Mary.
I mean, that was something I was going to bring up as well, that, um, it did, it was a, it did jump out that it's, especially with the, um, school choice, that the, it increased by over a hundred students that have decided to leave.
Oh, Dr. Schwan.
I also want to mention, however, though, if you look at the choice in numbers, they've quadrupled. So they're grizzling, they're not at the same level as the choi- choice out, but we have a number of, we have forty-eight, I believe is the number now, of kids who have chosen to come here from another place. So, and that, that number is, has risen substantially.
Well, thank you for sharing that, because that's not on the numbers that we have, so, yeah.
But it should be mentioned, because everybody, you know, it's common, you want to look at what the problem is, and, and I get it, but we also have to look at some of the advances that, you know, little by little, we're starting to see a little bit of a shift.
Is, is the bulk of that night school? No?
No.
What, what grades would you say?
I haven't analyzed it, I know that, um, I just got that information, and I was fascinated by it, looking at the diff, you know, looking at the two different charts, and over the time, over a period of time, and I realized, wow, forty-eight students have chosen to come, and I have to dig in a little bit more.
Okay.
We're, we're seeing, right now, we're seeing quite an increase in the lower elementary, with students choicing in, um, to the point where we're having to, I mean, it's always been, we'd sign off quickly. We're now to the point that we're watching the numbers, because we've had so many coming.
Yeah, and there's, there's not much room right now, at the moment, you know, but there will be, yeah.
Is there a percentage of those students choosing in that are requiring special needs services?
I, like I said, I have to go through that more, uh, because I just really received that report, so I'll look more deeply into it, and get back to you.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, anything further? Okay, moving on to the report of the business manager. So happy.
Hi.
Hi.
It's an end of financials, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
So first, I'm going to look at the FY nineteen, it says Wareham Public Schools Financial Review, which is basically the school budget, the LEA, and the breakdown, um, there's a summary sheet on the top, that, that gives you the different cost centers, and what the nineteen budget currently is versus the nineteen expenditures through March thirty-first, what the ending balance is, and the percent expended. Is it this one? Yes. Okay. So the report doesn't show significant difference between last year and this year, um, which has been pretty steady throughout the year. You'll see that the Wareham Public Schools has expended approximately sixty-five point nine-three percent of our total budget from July first through March thirty-first. Um, in comparison to FY eighteen, at the same point in time, the Wareham Public Schools expended about sixty-two point zero-two, so we're pretty spot-on. We're, we're a little bit higher this year, but pretty close at the sixty-two percent. Um, we're three-quarters away through the year, so we're pretty much at the seventy-five percent mark, so, um, we're in a good place. You'll see there's, there's a remaining balance of about nine point eight million dollars of unspent funding, um, of which five point seven million is for encumbered salaries. This leaves an estimated four point one million available funding through the end of June. Um, those for, those could be for unexpected expenditures, those are for certain things that we can't project, like substitute teachers, um, unanticipated supplies and materials that were needed, um, and other things, sometimes people that are paid on pay slips, doing extra work or overtime, so that's what the, the balance of the four point one would cover. At this point, I'm not, I'm not concerned at all, I mean, because I think we're in a really good place, um, considering, um, we should be at the seventy-five percent mark. I don't know if anybody has any questions, I tried to give you as much detail in the report as I could. There's no area that really stands out, any more than the other, when you compare it from year to year. Questions on that?
Ms. Backyaki?
I don't have any questions, um, but I just want to say thank you for the, for the level of detail, um, that we've received, it's very much appreciated, and very helpful. When looking at the reports, to be able to go to that second tab and, and see the details, very helpful.
Correct. Well, I think that also alleviates a lot of questions, too, because you can actually see where the numbers are coming from.
Mm-hmm.
So, if there's no questions on that, we will go to, um, let's go to the March grant. So it should say FY nineteen March grant. So again, there's a summary page attached here. On the front page, again, I, I identified July first through March thirty-first, I gave you the breakdown of the federal, the state, and the total. FY eighteen, I gave you the total that we had last year, I gave you the total that we had in February, and then I gave you the total that we had in March. So between February and March, we have increased by about fifty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which is several new grants that came through, um, between those two months, one was an enhanced program for students with disabilities for twenty thousand dollars, and the Fresh Foods and Vegetables program, that was a food service grant that came through for about another twenty-eight thousand dollars, and then after-school and out-of-school time quality enhancements for twenty-five hundred dollars, so those, those were the differences that came in, and we're still, um, like, as of today, we had two more new grants come in, so grants, we have an abundance of grants. So you will see that, um, change. And if you go through, um, the slides that are up on the screen now, I've broken down in detail each grant, what it's made up of, how it's spent, and what has been expended through. So if you look at what she's, go to the screen right now, it will show you for the, um, two-six-two grant, the special ed preschool grant. The budget was eighteen thousand fifty-four, we've spent twelve thousand forty-one, and I think the next line will show, we have a remaining balance of six thousand dollars, so I went through each grant and identified, um, what the budget was, what we've spent, and what we have remaining. Questions on grants?
Ms. Rossi.
So the grant, from my understanding, is the grant money has to be spent this school year, or is this able to roll into?
There are some grants that have to be spent through the, the end of the school year, and there are others that will roll, um, they're two-year grants.
So these particular ones on this sheet, are they ones that roll, or are these ones we have to spend before the end of the year?
Both. They're combined.
Oh, okay.
They're combined.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, moving on.
So, the next one, FY nineteen revolving and donations report? So these are, these are the, the accounts that are, all the other accounts outside of grants and LEA school budget. So you have your school lunch, you have your fuel up to play, you have your Cape Cod Five, um, and then you can see, again, I gave a comparison from this, this year to last year. There, there are, again, no areas of concern, there is one grant, I'm trying to get to. I'm not grant, I'm sorry, revolving. That is, on the second page, I believe, um, it's the only one that's currently in deficit, which is the state wards, um, which is about four hundred and thirty-six dollars, um, in the red. No, no concern there, we, we get, um, monthly, um, electronic deposits into our account from the state, so we're just waiting for the month of March to come through, and that negative will go away. But if you look at the comparison, um, from last year to this year, um, we had about, we, we ended the year at this time, it's six hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and seventy last year, and this year it was six forty-four, four sixty-two, so we're pretty spot-on there, too, um, running very similar to what we were last year. And it will show you, you know, the beginning balances, what we've spent, um, and what's remaining. Those, most of those do roll from year to year, because they're revolving.
Ms. Morgan?
So, I apologize, I think I tried to print it out, but it all came blank. So, is, I saw that the preschool tuition is, is on there. It's, so where it says Office of Beyond School Time, is that the money that we're taking in from the daycare?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, if that was included within the list.
Uh, sorry, I have a question, um, on this list, it had, on the beginning balance for ad care educational, six thousand, and it's still there, it, it had, nothing has been spent, what exactly is that?
So the ad care, um, let me find the backup to that, a minute. I don't, I can, I can look that up now, if you'd like, or I can get back to you on that, I don't, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Of what exactly ad care educational is?
What it, what it's used for, um, there are different people that apply for those, and that manage that money, um, I can certainly look it up right now.
Does anyone on the panel know what ad care educational is? Six thousand dollars in it, and no one seems to know what it is, that's.
No, it's not, um. I'm going to look it up right now, because I have the detail behind it.
Just, uh, while she's looking that up, I want to throw it out there that, um, Ms. Ruiz printed out my packet, and if you guys have trouble, I'm sure she'll print it out for you guys, too.
She will, as soon as we order paper.
You know, and it comes on big, huge Fred Flintstone, you know, paper, just.
We have to be able to read it, we have to read it. I'm sorry, I'm, I am looking it up right now, because I have definitions for each one, I just don't have it in front of me.
And the other account that looks like nothing has been done with either, you know, beginning balance or not, was school surplus, thirteen hundred dollars?
So that is a brand-new, um, account that we started probably a month ago, and that was from the sale of, um, the surplus of equipment at.
From Minnet?
Minnet.
Okay, thank you.
Do, do you want to get back to us?
I'm going to get back to you on that, because I don't want to wait, I mean, I can definitely get back to you, April, I don't want to waste everybody's time.
It's a prevention, intervention, and treatment of substance abuse and related public health issues.
So it must be a new one, it must be something we just received.
Yeah, it's advanced awareness, knowledge, and skills in the prevention, intervention, and treatment of substance abuse and related public health issues.
It's probably a recent, new grant for us.
It was, it was on there from last year's budget, too. Yep, it was exactly on there, and nothing's been used, either last year or this year, six thousand dollars stayed the same.
Well, there's plenty, I know exactly what it could be used for, so if it's needs to be used, we're good.
And, are you, are you done on that? Um, and I had a similar question, I, I didn't, I didn't know that ad care was opiate-related, but above that, mass opioid, what do we use that for?
Same type, type of thing, it's, it's to, to educate, um, based on the opiate, um, epidemic, sorry, crisis.
So then we have six thousand dollars sitting, waiting to be used to educate the students, or the public, or what have you, on, that we're not using?
I'm sure it'll be used.
Yeah, the, um, the one, the mass opioid, I, was a grant that some people received in the summer program, so that's been used to help summer programming with various students, and, um, to educate them on.
In care last year, they had a great program for it, correct?
Yes, right.
Which just seems like a waste, since, you know, on the budget from, from last year to this year, there's been nothing either used or put in with this, and it just seems like it's sitting there, wasting away, when we could be utilizing it, especially given the fact that there is such an epidemic in this town, if that's what, in fact, it's used for, so I would like to see something be done with that.
There could also be a plan for it, we don't know what else.
Could be what?
There could also be some plan for it, that we don't know.
Yes, there are quite a few plans.
So there are monies of showing up with plans that no one in the district seems to know about?
Well, everybody manages different grants, so like, if I have plans for my grant money, not everybody necessarily knows what my grant money plans are, but can, like, the superintendent would know, but not everybody else would know, so.
And in, and in fairness, this, this is Ms. Owen's first year, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying anything against you or your grant choices, I'm just saying, in general, the fact that, you know, there's something listed on a budget that nobody here, without Google that nobody here, without Googling, seemed to know what it was, just seems a little, especially since it was on there from the previous year, seems a little concerning to me.
And I apologize, because I did, I did have definitions of what each one was made up of and who. I just can't pull it up right now.
Yeah, I think I remember that.
Thank you.
Anything else? No, Ms. Morgan?
Sorry to add to it, but, so it sort of brings up a question, and maybe it could be somehow included in your details, or maybe you already have it in your details, like, who's overseeing that grant?
And I did, I think, I want to say at the last meeting I did, and I identified who.
It was like the end of the year or something like that.
And I want to say it's Dan Asimple, I think, is the person who was managing those.
Who knew, you know, like, all this information, you know?
It looks like there's another grant that hasn't been touched this year at all, that was, monies were taken out of the same grant last year for the Fuel Up to Play 60. I know we have a student representative, our lovely Massachusetts representative from Fuel Up to Play 60 here, so I don't know if he's aware, because Indiana is aware of everything, as to what that is or why that hasn't been utilized this year at all either.
Yeah, so...
Oh, yeah.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Indy.
I think there was a plan to do something with nutrition and food service.
Yeah, so just like Ms. Owens here, we do have a new food service director this year, too, who's also helping spearhead our Fuel Up to Play 60 program. So we're meeting to discuss what she thinks the best plans are for it. We get grants every year, sometimes twice a year, from Fuel Up to Play 60 in the New England Dairy Council to use on Fuel Up-related things. So it goes to new PE equipment or new foods at school lunches, so we'll have to figure out what the best place is for that. But we do know it's there, and we're still trying to figure out.
Okay, so that plans, you guys plan to do that before the end of this year?
Yes.
Is that another grant that would expire per year, or is that carryover?
I think it carries over.
Okay, thank you, Indy.
No problem.
Anything else on this?
Those are the only two that jumped out at me, so...
Okay. Anything else?
There is one, one other thing that I wanted to bring up, and it was, we had a, we had a conversation, and I believe a vote on minimum wage at one of our last meetings, that we voted to raise the minimum wage, obviously, to abide by the minimum wage of the $12 an hour, but we made it effective July 1. And since meeting with the Budget Subcommittee, we've decided that we'd like to make it retroactive to January 1. And so those people that are making less than the minimum wage would be compensated for that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I did, you know, I did hear from people mentioning that, and I think the disconnect is that we deal in numbers, absolute, you know, $11, not minimum wage, you know? So, so, so we, at the time, the minimum wage was $11. Well, then mid-year, it went up to like $12, you know, so, but we didn't account for that. So, so I'm glad to hear we're going to do that and make it retroactive. And I think I'm going to have a policy come forward that, you know, the school, the school committee will just, you know, you know, all staff will make at least state minimum wage, and just, it won't be, it won't be a surprise to anybody.
Yes.
Ms. Rossi.
A question regarding the minimum wage, because as I'm aware, that it's supposed to go up annually until it reaches, I believe, $15 an hour in Massachusetts. So does that mean that going forward, those people would then get retro when it goes again? Is this going to be something that's going to have to happen annually? Or is this something that we can find a way to place where it will go into effect January 1 as opposed to July?
We talked as a Budget Subcommittee that, that we're going to put something together in the policy, instead of stating a flat number, it's as minimum wage adjusts, we will adjust.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was like the whole point, just to avoid all of that, you know, for infinity. You know, so. Anything else?
I don't think so. You want me to talk more?
No.
We'll have to come back after the next...
Yeah, you will come back.
Okay.
All right, moving on to the report of the Director of Student Services.
So we've had kind of a busy couple of months. We had our Mental Health Awareness Night, which we did an awful lot of marketing and advertising for, and unfortunately, we only got about a dozen people, and it was kind of disappointing. We are going to hold another Mental Health Awareness Night during Mental Health Awareness Month, which is actually May, and try the same set of advertising techniques and hopefully get a better turnout. I'm hoping that some of the people that attended this Mental Health Awareness Night will share their experiences there. I know there were some referrals that were taken at that night. Some families were able to get services in their home as a result of attending that night, so I'm hoping that that word will spread, and more families will come to the next night. And I will announce that hopefully within the next meeting or two, I'll be able to share that with Dr. Shaverhood, and then she can announce that at one of the next meetings. And again, it'll be on all of our social media, Twitter, Facebook, our webpage, and we will do the phone calls and the emails to everybody as well, hopefully several times, and send flyers out and place flyers around town as well. We did have Gosnold Southeast Mental Health Services was there, which also does High Point, and May Institute was there, and Mass Health was there. So it was a really good group of people, and they brought a lot of resources, informational materials for parents. We also had some refreshments there, so it was, it was a nice night. Parents and caregivers stayed for quite a while, the people who did come, so it was a nice time for people who did come, yes.
So this was, the outside groups that came in, this isn't, it's offering resources outside of what we would be able to provide in schools, so would, for attendance purposes, would we be able to open this up to other districts that maybe, you know, invite them to attend this as well, and see if that helps with attendance and...
So this was a community event. Anybody could have attended in the community. It wasn't simply for our students and their families. It was for everybody in the community, but I would certainly be willing to extend it outside the community.
For example, that we have the students, you know, student athletes from Carver, things like that, extending, like, an actual invitation to Carver's administration, let them know about it, or Bourne, or, you know, the surrounding towns, to see if that would generate more interest?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. We also, tonight, actually, right before school committee, there was our second installation of Occupational Therapy Month. We had a grant that was written by one of our occupational therapists, Carol Wellburn, and after school today, from 3:15 to, I believe, 5:15, was our second installation, which was pre-K and K writing readiness for parents and staff. And that was all run through grant money. And this is the second session that Mrs. Wellburn has run at DECAUS, and they are well-attended, and I think they've been really successful. She's got two more to run before the end of the school year. So if you get a chance to look on DECAUS website, I know that they are also putting that on social media, so if you get a chance to attend one of those, they're a lot of fun to go to. We are attending a CPAC, we are sponsoring a CPAC Parents Rights Seminar coming up, hopefully at the end of May. The details of that should be coming up by the next meeting, and that will again be on all of our social media websites, and also on our school district website, Facebook, Twitter, all the same things that we always do. Also, if you're interested, Best Buddies Foundation right now is having a fundraiser through Shaw's. So if you go to Shaw's, you can donate anywhere from a dollar to whatever you feel like donating, and it will go to benefit Best Buddies programs, including the one here in Wareham. And I think that is about all the announcements that we have. Yes, Mary?
So talking about the occupational therapists and the workshops that she's offering, just reminded me of that Mary Beth Kiernan had this awesome program, I think it's called Box Kids, or that where in the morning, she would work with a group of children doing exercises to help prepare them for the day. Does she still do that?
I'm not sure, because she moved to, so it's kind of shifted. Mary Beth is now over with the older kids, and Carol is at DECAUS and works with the younger population of students. And I know Carol does a lot of stuff. She has like Friday Fun Day with the students, and she rotates different classrooms through. And if you go to DECAUS on a Friday, you'll see the hallway set up with different activities for the kiddos to go through, and she, in the morning, you'll see them out by the buses dancing and doing activities with the kids. So I know that she does that. I'm not sure about the other piece, but I can look at it, into it, and get back to you.
All right, thank you.
Just wait to be recognized, just...
Sorry.
All right, Ms. Rossi.
I, I believe that the PTA was involved with the Box Kids, at least had been when I was involved with the elementary PTA, so they may still have something to do with getting that organized, and I know it was definitely very successful.
It was, yeah.
Anyone else? Anything further? Okay. All right, we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to the vote of the FY20 Budget/Town Meeting Action.
So before we go forward, I just, I want to answer April's question, because I knew I had the information. I just couldn't put my hands on it that quickly. So it's Ad Care Educational Institute. It's a, it's to be used for wellness initiatives. It was applied for by Rob Sheehan, which is the previous food service director, in September of 2017, and it's for the Wellness Committee to review how to use funds to include asthma awareness and items to assist with environmental conditions that contribute to asthma and school-related problems. Sorry.
Thank you.
I just couldn't put my hands on it that quick.
Yeah, and I know you had all sorts of descriptions for like everything, and obviously, it was there, yeah. And, yeah, so we're on to the FY20 Budget.
So the budget, I'm sorry.
You can't miss it.
It's a notebook. So I provided you with several, I provided the larger document, which literally lists every line item within the school department under the LEA. So you can see exactly what the budget was in 2018, what the budget was for '19, and what our FY20 budget is now currently. So that will give you all the detail you would ever want. The page that's up on the account is by major account, and it's broken down, I showed you 2017, 2018, and then if you notice at the bottom, you'll see the totals. You will see the total increase from last year to this year is a 1.41% increase, which is really nice, very, very lenient, reserved, and it was a total of about $400,000 increase over last year. So, and it lists your non-net school spending and your net school spending to give you the total budget of the $29,430,737. And then the last sheet is just, I think, the vote sheet that just, it gives you the net school spending of the $27,609,312, yeah, $27,609,312, and the non-net school spending is $1,821,425 to give you the total budget of $29,430,737. Just to note, originally, we were given a different number, which was about $29,262,246, so we received an additional $168,491, which we added back. There was, there was a request for over $400,000 of additional supplies and materials that we took out to balance, so we've put that back in.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? Ms. MacIkey?
I just have a comment, I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you. I mean, this process did start back in October. It's been, it's been quite a process, and I know it's been your first year, and so I think it's gone really well, and I really appreciate the fact that we're able to take our priorities and, and, you know, focus on, focus on those and the budget, and also that it was, it's been a collaboration with the town side. Like you said, we were able to receive additional funds. So all in all, I think it was a, it was a good budget process. Thanks.
Anyone else? Yeah, no, I commend everybody involved, including, you know, us, the business manager, superintendent, the school committee, the town, meaning, you know, the selectmen and the town meeting. This is the first time maybe ever for me, that I don't think there's any layoffs slated at all for next year. No layoffs, not, I mean, no layoffs. I don't remember ever.
No.
And that's, that's amazing. You know, I think it's a sign of the improving economy, I think, but, but that's remarkable. I want to point out, I want to point out, so if you can see this, this, this is huge, all right? This is just about every worthwhile line item that the, that the budget is for the schools, right down to like all kinds of detail. I don't know, it's got to be something like 25, maybe 30 line items per page, and it's got to be something like 15 pages. It kills me when I'm out and about in the town, and they tell me that when, when we, that the schools don't show our numbers. We just show the budget, and nobody knows what's behind it. It's all right here, line by line. Anyone wants it, we're going to have it up on the website later, after we vote, and it's, it's there for anyone to see. So if anyone ever asks, just point them right there. And with that, I guess I'll entertain a motion for net school spending to vote in the amount of $27,600, I'm sorry, $27,609,312.
So moved. Second.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0-0. Moving on to non-net school spending, I'm looking for a motion to approve $1,821,425.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Passes 5-0-0. And finally, for the, the total budget, number of $29,430,737. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think I've told you everything there is to know today about the finances.
So we're moving on to the, so on the agenda, we have possible vote on Cafeteria's contract. Dr. Shaverhood?
Yes, we're going to pass on that. We've not been informed that the cafeteria has voted on their contract, so it will not come to you to vote on until we receive that vote.
Next, we have the report of the superintendent.
Thank you. So the first order of business would be to have you vote on the bills and payroll warrants. The only addition I have, other than the ones you have listed, would be the payroll warrant on April 20th in the amount of $102,123.39. So I would be asking you to please approve the four pay, or the two payrolls and the two bill warrants.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0-0.
Okay, thank you. I would remind people that our bus enrollment forms are due. To please get them in, last year, we were forced to extend the deadline many times. Hence, when we started school, we were really scrambling to get the list out. That will not happen this year. We have the deadline set. It will remain at, I believe it's the end of, end of May, and that is the deadline. So we need to create the bus routes, we need to make sure that we have drivers, and we really need people's cooperation, so I would urge you to complete that form. I would share with you that we've received several grants in the last week. We received the Sale and Care Summer Programs in the amount of $40,000 that will be used in the summer with our care program. We received this one, and this was a competitive one, and we're quite excited that we, we did manage to receive this in the amount of $110,000. And this will be used to improve student access to behavior and mental health resources. What we will do is be bringing people in to work with our students in the after-school, in our PAST program, and in our alternative program, and so we really are, are very pleased to have that, receive that grant. We received the 21st Century Commuting Community Learning Center Grant with students with disabilities. We received $20,000 for the high school and Minnet site. We received an additional $6,000 for the Mass Grad Promising Program Grant. dollars for the Mass Grad Promising Program Grant, and this will allow us to run a summer program for our alternative night pass school, so we're going to be offering classes for our, our alternative program this summer for the first time, for our students to earn credits, and what we're going to do is, we're going to focus on elective credits that the students can earn in this time, because during the school year, there's really not that opportunity for them to do that. We received 21,800 dollars in the development and expansion of high-quality summer learning, and this will be used to expand kayaking, sailing, and swimming programs, last year we had 12 students that were able to participate, this year we'll have 50, so we're thrilled with that. We received 4,400 dollars in summer food program, Farm to Summer, and also 13,440 dollars that will allow us to expand our summer food offerings at different sites, so we are very happy, and I'm pleased to report that to you. Uh, tonight, Dr. Schwam and I attended the JROTC Awards, and it was just a special night where our students have worked so hard, and they've been recognized, um, we are, have one or two students that will be graduating, but we have a number of students in the program, and certainly by bringing the eighth grade over, our JROTC has just expanded at a very nice level. And I would remind everyone that it's the 40th Annual Wareham DECA Dinner and Auction, it's going to be held on May 19th at the high school cafeteria, doors will open at 5:00 to 10:00, this year they're going to have baked stuffed chicken, mashed potatoes, and screen, and string beans, the tickets are $5 donation, uh, pre-sale, and $7 at the door, so I would urge you to, uh, support DECA, who are at the national conference, so we're waiting to hear how they do, and that concludes my report.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Bakayaki, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, I thought you had, you didn't hand up earlier.
No, no, no.
Ms. Rossi? Oh, okay, no, no one?
Oh, good.
Well.
Oh, you did, okay.
So, um, no, the, the DECA auction is really a great take, if you can, if you can make it, it's, it's cheap money, and it's just a good time, I mean, they really run it like a real auction, it's, it's, it's so fun, uh, there's some great stuff there, and people get competitive, and it's, it's funny, um, let's see, the, um, I just wanted to, to confirm, and I know we spoke about this, I just wanted the public to hear it, but the leadership structure is going to remain the same for next year as it is this year?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
It's been working very well, we've been able to accomplish the number of evaluations that we need to legally, and we believe that our schools are moving in the right direction.
Okay. Oh, uh, Ms. Morgan?
Isn't there, I'm, I'm confused, isn't there, um, a bit of a change in the leadership? Like, like at the high school, isn't there?
Well, there's one assistant principal of special ed being added.
Right, that's what I thought.
And, but it's dropping off at the team chair, so that's not being replaced.
Okay, but it's still, I mean, it's still, you're talking about team chair, isn't that, um, a teacher?
Mm-hmm.
And so you're going from a teacher to an administrator?
Yeah, that would be the only change.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, moving on, um, let's see, that was, um, reporter of the school committee, recommendations of the policy review committee.
I actually had a question about the previous.
Okay, see, so Ms. Rossi, go for it.
Sorry, so when you say that we're losing, that, that teacher is moving up to a special ed, um, assistant principal, from a special ed teacher, is that teacher's position going to be replaced, or is that just like a wash, you're taking that, is that, that position is now vacant, you're looking for someone to fill it, or is it not going to be filled?
Well, a team chair only teaches, um, well, I'm sorry, she's not a team chair, she's a department head, and the department head teaches two classes a day, there is a teacher being added at the high school, a special education teacher, um, full-time, she wasn't considered full-time, so her duties will be absorbed in her current position as the assistant principal, as far as the department head piece, but they're really gaining special education, because they're hiring a full-time, and they've only lost a person that teaches two, two classes.
Thank you, I was just concerned where those two classes would have fallen, so thank you.
Yeah, and so I guess I would also say that, you know, I've sat with Melissa, um, and we've gone through every, and we've sat with the principals, and we've looked at all our students that are coming into us, how they're shifting from, let's just say, DECA's to mine it, to look at staffing, to make sure that we have adequate coverage, we also are getting ready to post for paraprofessionals part-time, we talked about that, that we would be adding because, um, making some adjustments in the budget, so we're certainly looking at creating some support.
All right, all set, and actually, before moving on to policy review, um, just if any newspapers covering this, please, uh, make that announcement about the, the deadline for the, uh, the busing, please make that like a big, you know, front page thing.
Yeah, but they're, they're probably watching.
Yeah, they're probably watching, if you're watching, then please, you know, you know, advertise that, so that people know for sure that it's, it's a deadline, um, okay, moving up.
Sorry, regards to the deadline, so if that deadline is not met, those students will not be able to take the bus?
Not at the beginning, so what would happen would be, um, we would have to start the school year, we will see where we're at with our bus numbers, and then we would, if we have open seats, absolutely the students can't, we would enroll them and put them on the bus, you know, a question has come up as far as people saying, well, I'm not really sure if I should have to pay the fee or not pay the fee, our response is, please send in your form, if you need to pay us, we will let you know, but we just need the registration. The other thing that I would share would be, we have absolutely no intention of raising the bus transportation fee, it's going to remain the same, as well as all our other fees for the upcoming school year.
Thank you.
All right, policy review.
Okay, so first is curriculum adoption, um, so you did receive a couple of different versions in your email, the last one that we received was a revision that Dr. Schwam did today, um, and that was to add in that one paragraph, so I guess, first I would just ask for feedback from the committee.
So, so I, I gave you my feedback, I, I really liked that, the very last, the short one, and I could see merging it with the longer one, but I liked, I really liked that, uh, the way the school committee was really a part of the process, and it involved. Uh, anyone else?
It was added.
Huh?
That paragraph was, should have been added to the last.
Yeah, that, it's, it is?
Yes, I, because I did this, I did it this morning.
Okay.
I did it this morning.
Okay.
Because you had suggested it, so I added it, then we sent it, resent it.
So.
It's, it's right before the superintendent.
Oh, gotcha, okay. It wishes to be informed of all the forces. I think that's, that's not what you sent me earlier today, is it Joyce?
I cut and pasted it, it is. It's, this is the shorter version, this is the last paragraph.
Okay, that would probably be over.
It's the second right here, the underneath of that one, that was the short.
So, so where it says, okay, hold on. "The committee itself will consider and officially adopt new programs and courses when they constitute an extensive alteration in instructional content or approach," that's in the new one? This is the new one? Okay.
Tiny writing.
Yeah. No, that's not in the blue.
The exact same, it's, the blue is the last paragraph from the second page.
So, go to the last paragraph, Mike, the last sentence, "The Wareham School Committee will subsequently consider and officially adopt new programs and courses submitted by the superintendent."
I see it, perfect, thank you. Okay.
So this version includes all of, of the items that we've, that we, you and I have discussed.
Yeah.
And I, Dr. Schwam, correct me if I'm wrong, but the policy review committee just wanted more detail in the policy, and that's why we have this one.
Correct, so the original policy came to the committee, the committee asked us to go back, I examined all of the policies from many different districts across the state, and found what I then was the shorter version, that, along with the other one, was brought to the policy subcommittee, the policy subcommittee wanted the more detailed one, the first original policy, right, so that was their decision at the policy subcommittee level, so then that was shared, and that one area was requested by you this morning, and so we cut and pasted it into that, the policy that the policy subcommittee chose, um, and so I guess that was the, the phases and stages of how this worked.
So that's why this is the final version.
Okay.
So this is the version that we would vote on to approve.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the curriculum adoption policy?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions, passes 500. Uh, student activity accounts?
So this one, there have been no changes since our last meeting.
Right.
That we just waited in order to give everyone the ability to review it more.
Yep.
Okay, so, the, there's three in your email, the second one is the one that's being proposed. Are there any questions about that one?
Well, let's, let's get a motion first, so do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All right, uh, any discussion, questions? No? So.
We're doing the one with the yellow, the yellow is being removed. We're removing the highlighted sections, and we're adding number 13. So what this will do is add another step, um, that will require the approval of the business manager before a check is, is cut.
And I believe the, um, the business manager was really in support of this?
Yes.
So, um, we have, we have a motion in a second, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions, passes 500. I guess we're onto any other business?
So, I just, under reports of the school committee, I just wanted to say that, um, the school building committee continues to meet, the project continues to go forward, we should see some activity at the site over the summer, um, anyone who was at town meeting before, on the first night, before town meeting actually started, the architects produced a, a really great video of the, like a flyover of the new school, so, um, it was great that they were able to show it that night, and again, the, the website continues to be updated, so if anyone is curious about the project, um, you know what's going on, uh, all those materials are continuously updated to the website.
Okay.
I would just add to it that on Monday at 9:30, we will have a construction, the first construction meeting at the school, and we will have the people that will start the abatement, they're going to do some preliminary work, and we should be in full swing in probably two to three weeks, so we're looking at doing a final walkthrough and do some video, just so people can see, um, mine it before we change it.
Um, I had asked about putting a webcam up so that we could watch it, you know, you know, that's not going to happen, because apparently it's really expensive.
Oh, good.
So, for that reason, we won't have that.
Any other, oh, Ms. Rossi?
Just a question in regards to having, obviously, a webcam up, or, you know, a DareCam, for those people that are there, would it be possible that we could make a, almost like a Facebook page, a documentation page, where people who are, happen to be there, say you happen to be there one day, getting videos, you can share it there, so that the public can go on to it and kind of go blow-by-blow, or upload pictures, or people can upload pictures or memories that they may have had at the original mine it location, as sort of a community interactive?
I'm sure if someone wanted to create that type of Facebook page, it could be done, the, um, project manager already has a Facebook page that they're very good about updating with, um, information about the project.
Thank you.
That's been in existence since before the vote, um, and, and they're, they're very good about posting, and they're very good about responding on that Facebook page.
Anything else? Yes, that's it, motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those, uh, all those who approve?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes 500.